I don't know whether we normally do or not.
Okay, we're live.
All right. Welcome, everyone, to our Monday night, November the 9th, City Council meeting. If we could have a roll call, please, ma'am, to establish a call.
Vicki Snyder?
Here.
Terry McLung. Susan Harmon?
Here.
Bob Thomas?
Here.
Melissa Green?
Here.
Perry Meyer?
Here.
We have five.
Terry McLung is absent with notice. All right. Get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second?
I have one item which just brought to my attention for Good Shepherd Grant Resolution that they need to get for a grant from the Good Shepherds. Put that on item number three for the new business. Do we have anything else from anyone? Mr. Thomas?
Yeah. If I can get a second, I would like counsel to consider the possibility of across-the-board salary increases in 2021 for city employees.
I'll second that for consideration.
All right, anybody else? All right, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, sing five, sing aye.
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 Any opposed? Get a motion to approve the minutes for August or October 26th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any changes, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we will have in your packet, I think there is a application from Tommy Zwimmerman, probably mispronounced her last name, for the HDC. And that position's going to be expiring on the 30th end of this month. And also Steve Holyfield will also expire then. We can bring those up for the next meeting. Public comments? Oh, yes, ma'am.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to reinstate Steve Holyfield for position five on the HDC.
Second?
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
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 Any opposed? So moved. All right, public comments? All right, no public comments. Brings us up to our first order of business is resolution for free two-hour parking in December. Get a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
This is our annual resolution that we always do this time of the year to provide two-hour free parking through the month of December for visitors and residents to come down and do Christmas shopping. So if I can get a motion to... Or is there any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion, we assign this resolution to a number, and read it for passage.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Five, zero. The... Resolution number will be seven, eight, seven. A resolution removing the requirement of paying the parking meters on Spring Street and Main Street and establishing free two-hour parking from December 1 through December 31, 2020. Whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, in an effort to promote business for the city during the period of December 1 to December 31, 2020, desires to establish free two-hour parking on Spring Street and Main Street for on-street parking metered spaces in Eureka Springs during the period of December 1 through December 31, 2020. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that section one, free two-hour parking is established on Spring Street and Main Street in metered spaces in Eureka Springs during the period of December 1 to December 31, 2020.
All right. Thank you. That brings us up to our second resolution, which is a resolution for the parking lot at the courthouse for 2021. Get a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right. This is our annual lease that we give between the county and the city for the parking lot lease. If there are any questions or comments?
How much does a lease cost?
Beg your pardon?
What does that cost us?
It wasn't... The same amount that we've been paying for the last, I don't know, how many years?
I've never heard of it being raised, but I don't know a specific amount.
Yeah, I can't buy them.
Well, the resolution says it's authorizing you to negotiate the lease.
Right.
So...
But I don't think it's ever been, it's hadn't been, ever been raised or anything in there. And I'm trying to think how much it is right off the top of my head, and I don't know. To be honest with you, I just know it hadn't been raised on there.
Check with Finance Department.
Yeah. Mr. Thomas?
Then I move to assign this resolution a number and read it for passage.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Five, zero. The resolution number seven, eight, eight. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to negotiate and execute a parking lot lease agreement with the Carroll County Western District Courthouse parking lots by and between the county of Carroll County, Arkansas as lessor, and the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas as lessie. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. The mayor of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, is hereby authorized to negotiate and execute a lease agreement for the Carroll County Western District Courthouse parking lot by and between the county of Carroll County, Arkansas as the lessor, and the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas as lessie, whereby said city agrees to lease the following described property. The existing parking lots immediately surrounding and adjacent to the Carroll County Western District Courthouse located at 44 South Main Street, Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Such parking lots presently occupying the property directly northeast and south of said courthouse and bounded by distinct barriers such as the auditorium, First Street, and Curbs respectively for a term of one year commencing on January 1, 2021, and ending at midnight on December 31, 2021.
Thank you very much. Our third resolution is a, get a motion to discuss the resolution for...
Motion to discuss.
Beg your pardon?
I said motion to discuss.
Okay. This is a motion, or a resolution, rather, to apply for a grant for the Good Shepherd Humane Society.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If you have any questions of it, Cole is down there, the Shepherd manager. He came tonight. If you have any questions?
Mr. Thomas?
I just moved to assign the resolution a number and read it for passage.
Second?
Okay.
I got a motion and a second to read for passage. Any discussion? All right.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Five, zero. The resolution number will be seven, eight, nine. A resolution to apply for a spay and neuter grant on behalf of the Good Shepherd Humane Society. Whereas the City Council has determined that the Good Shepherd Humane Society meets eligibility requirements necessary to apply for a grant under the Arkansas Spay and Neuter Grant Program. And whereas the Good Shepherd Humane Society has presented plans to operate a low-cost, high-volume spay and neuter clinic, AN, whereas the council recognizes the need for the project, concurs with its importance, and supports the Good Shepherd Humane Society in its efforts to proceed with the same. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the mayor is hereby authorized to submit an application of formal request to the Arkansas Economic Development Commission for the purpose of securing grant funds in the amount of $3,000 to aid and assist the Good Shepherd Humane Society in executing the proposed project described herein. And the mayor or clerk treasurer is further authorized to administer the grant funds for the same project.
All right. Thank you. All right, that brings us up to our item for discussion for salaries for employees across the board. Motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Mr. Thomas?
A little background. I had planned to, tonight, after the election was over, to try to get the council to give a bonus to all of the city employees for their work during the virus times. I think that it was critical that they come to work, and most of them did. And according to Tim Weaver, we can't give you a bonus, so I just have to say thank you to all of you. I hope that'll buy you some bread or something at heart. But we also, council last year, talked about getting involved in the budget development, starting in June. And of course, the virus came along, and we really haven't done that at all. It's going to be presented by the mayor. The city budget will be presented by the mayor in December and voted on, you know, in January. So I am asking this council to approve a salary increase for city employees. I would like the, I don't know if the mayor has put one into the budget already.
We have a COLA that's figured at this point because of the COVID virus. We're not planning on putting anything in at this point, but we're looking at something possibly at midterm because we still don't know what's going to happen. There's a lot of qualitative things that are going on with the COVID virus. If we get shut down, you know, hopefully we won't, but they are shutting down places in Texas and Louisiana, shutting businesses down.
Well, I...
I don't think our governor's going to do that, but we were hesitant to include anything at this point until we found out exactly where we are in our budget.
Right. Well, I think what we learned this year was that, you know, if we have to, we can pull back. You know, in March, we looked at a budget that cut severely what we had budgeted in January. I would like to see, the Social Security COLA is 1.3%, but I would hope that this council would approve tonight, including a 2% increase for all city employees. And of course, if, you know, the state shuts down in the middle of the year, we may have to correct that.
So it's hard to take money away from employees, as we talked about with the fire department. So, anyway. Ms. Snyder?
Can we do, when this comes up for discussion and vote in January, half of us won't be here. Can we agree tonight that there will be two proposals, one with the increase, one without? So that can be discussed in January thoroughly? As bad as the country did, Eureka did great this year. That doesn't mean we're going to stay great, true. But we did great. So if you could do two proposals in that regard, then that would cover the salary increase if possible. And they could always understand, you know, if we get totally shut down, we're sorry, but... I don't know. But that should be something that can be looked into and probably proposed.
Ms. Green?
How about if we did something midway, midway in the budget with a clause that if we don't shut down and we're doing well, that can we go retro back then to the first of the year?
Yes, we can. We can always do that at mid-year. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, because I'm, like you, Butch, I am nervous too what could happen. And you're correct. When you give somebody something, it's really hard to take it away.
At this point, our budget, as you well know, if you look at our last month, we're still 4% below...
Yeah.
What last year's was. Mr. Thomas?
Oh, I'd just like...
I'm sorry.
He was not...
Well, I know, he's already spoken, though.
Okay, thanks. Well, I would, the minimum wage is going to be a dollar more January 1st. It's going to be $11. So there are going to be some people that are going to get a raise no matter what. I still think that we should give people a starting wage above minimum wage, at least a dollar above minimum wage for starting pay. That just, that just seems fair. It's hard to make it on that wages, those wages. A lot of these guys can't even go to the dentist if you take a look at their teeth. And it wouldn't affect the budget. If you gave everyone that was working for minimum wage a buck, I think it comes down to about $27,000. It's peanuts.
Ms. Harmon?
I just have a question about the options you have as far as rewarding city employees. And I know this is also done other places as well. But city employees qualify for the COLA increase, correct?
Correct.
And is that given out every year? Depends on where the economy is, correct? Has it been consistent, though, for...
I'm sorry, what was the question?
I said, the COLA is based on where our economy is. So it could be a half a percent, it could be 2%, it could be 3%. It just depends, right? Has that, has that been consistent over the last five years for city employees? That's question number one.
We've been doing 2% to 3% for COLA for the last several years.
Have received?
And, well, depends on where we are. The last time we did, we have, we have the COLA, which can be 2%, and then we have a raise based on their performance evaluation.
Okay, those are the merit increases, correct?
It's a merit increase.
Okay. And not everybody qualifies for merit increase because you've set guidelines as to when they get or don't get, correct?
It's a merit increase.
Okay. All right, so there's merit increases, there are COLA increases, and then there are increases for salary based on whether or not the budget is approved for those increases, above and beyond those two, correct? Are there any other...
What you're talking about's new. We only do the COLA and the merit increase.
Okay. But what I'm saying is, if city council decided to go ahead and give city employees a raise, that would be your third option, if that was approved, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure I understood what, what options they have currently as far as raises go. And if, if, if they have been consistent, at least on the COLA side, over the last five years. That was it.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I'd just like to respond to Ms. Snyder and say that the, the budget that will be given to the council in January, they're, they're free to negotiate that and change it as they wish. There's no reason to give them, you know, two options to look at. They really just need to take the mayor's one proposed budget and, you know, go from there.
Mr. Harmon? I mean, Mr. Meyer?
The cost of living allowance is actually, in the code, is set by the council. And usually they go, go by the national, whatever the national cost of living allowance is. And, but last year, the cost of living allowance nationally was 3%, but the administration decided to hold back a penny for, for, I don't know what reason.
Well, and that's why I...
It was for merit.
Consistently given.
Well, it's, you know, cost of living is because your dollar has got lost 3 cents for the next year. So it's not merit, it's a loss. It's just, it's an insult. As far as I...
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I, I think I made a motion to give city employees a 2% increase this year. The Social Security cost of living is 1.3%, so it's a little better than the COLA nationwide.
Ms. Snyder?
I think Melissa's suggestion was great.
I'm sorry?
I think Melissa's suggestion was, was great. That way it can be in there, and it can be done if and when we can afford. And, you know, but yeah, I do think we need to have something going on so that the upcoming council has plenty of input.
Any further discussion? We got a motion and a second to have a 2% across-the-board raise from the...
I didn't hear a second.
There wasn't a second?
There wasn't a second?
No.
Well, then I have a comment.
Discuss.
Yeah.
Okay. You want to make a motion?
I thought I made a motion for 2% across the board.
Or would you like to restate your motion, please, sir?
I would like for the city council to give, to put into the proposed 2021 budget a 2% across-the-board salary increase for city employees.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say that if I were a city employee, I would much rather get a raise for six months and then, when the virus was rampant and everybody realized it was rampant, we all have common sense, that you might have to pull back. If you don't give it to them in January and you wait until March, or you wait until June and everything, you know, we're still doing okay, they've just lost six months of...
That would be retroactive, Mr. Thomas.
It would be retroactive.
It would be retroactive?
It would be retroactive.
That's what I suggested.
Yeah, that's the thing. That was a good idea.
Okay, I, I would just, I have a motion and a second, so I'd like...
Right.
All right. Roll call? Any further discussion? Okay.
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Um, no.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Come back to me. I'm confused.
Ms. Harmon?
No.
Ms. Snyder?
No.
Two, three.
Okay.
Do you want something?
Beg your pardon?
Can we ask Bob to redo it using the other wordage?
You can redo it.
Do you want me to do it, maybe?
Yes.
I make a motion that we, in June, look at a 2% raise, retroactive, if we are, I guess, moving along like we are now.
If we're doing well.
If we're doing well.
If the budget looks...
If, if the budget can...
Handle it.
Handle it, yes. I would definitely like, with the, with the retroactive clause.
Mr. Weaver?
If you leave it that open-ended, you're setting yourself up for a lawsuit.
Okay.
In regards to what part?
If you leave it open-ended and you don't grant it, those wanting it would sue and claim that you are doing well. And if you are doing well, or think you are, and do grant it, then those who think you're not doing well can bring suit. You need a measurable stick by which to say if we are at this point, if you want to avoid that possibility.
Make a percentage?
Ms. Snyder?
Okay, I make a motion that if the, that we declare in January, if the budget will handle it, we will do raises in June instead of January. Can we do that? Tim, I'm looking at you.
You still have the problem of it being fluid as what is doing good in January. You, you need a number to measure it.
Okay, well, the 2%.
No, you need a number to measure what is doing good.
Oh. So now this is something we should put on the agenda for next meeting and have definite hard numbers to deal with? Bob, can you do that?
You might be able to come up with numbers. I don't know.
We can talk to Mr. Clark and see where we are.
Then I would move to have, I would move to have Mr. Clark bring in the figures for a 2% across-the-board salary increase for city employees at the next meeting.
And I'll second that.
Okay, Ms. Harmon?
At any point, Butch can bring this to this table, no matter who's sitting here, and make that request, and city council can vote on it. So while Lonnie or Butch aren't, I mean, nobody knows where these numbers are going to be. If he decides he wants to include it in the 2021 budget, he can do that. And it can either be voted for or voted against. And then in June, when the review is done again, he could do the same. So whether or not, I mean, they're closer to the numbers than, than, than we are, or we would be, or any city council would be as to where we're at at that time. But at any time, he could do that if he wanted to do that. So I would just as soon leave it. And again, I'm not going to be sitting here, so, but I think it, it, it really is kind of a function... While it's nice that city council does make the motion, he can bring it to this table at any time.
But this way, don't we make him come to the table?
I think the opposite of that is true also. If the budget is prepared and he can come in in January and say, here's the budget, but I think I suggest we reduce this, this, and this. I, I would like to just, I won't be here in January either, but I would like for this council to walk away having affirmed the fact that we appreciate our employees and we understand that, you know, most of us are going to get at least a 1.3% increase in our retirement, and we would like to, to do the same for them. Like you say, he could take it back in January. Tonight, we could just say, hey, we think you deserve a raise.
Ms. Green?
There's nothing more than I would like to do than reward our employees. They have been our heart and soul, especially through this COVID. But I'm reluctant, and I did vote no, just because I remember being closed and I remember that horrible fear when we first were here, how are we going to pay for things? And I'm hoping that that doesn't happen. I'm hoping in February, we can, we can do a raise, or at least by June, and make it retroactive. But I, I would just like, I, I don't want to promise until we just get through the winter and see where we're at.
Mr. Thomas?
I, I would go back to Mr. Weaver. I think Mr. Weaver has kind of made it clear that if you want to do something retroactive, you need to come up with some very, very specific, objective goals that will help you make that determination. Otherwise, you're going to be in trouble. I mean, let's not...
When you're talking about going back in the past, I think most of, several of us were here when, six years ago, when we almost had to lay people off and COVID wasn't even involved then. Because of the COVID, I'm very hesitant, and so is our finance director. And we've talked about giving raises, and Lord knows, all of our employees deserve the raises. That goes without saying. But I also know too, when we were talking about, when COVID first came up and we had 20, you know, people were wanting to cut the budget by 35%, the way to do that was to cut salaries, and that wasn't satisfactory. So once we do this, we can't go back and say, we're going to take this 2% away. Ms. Harmon?
I just want to ask Tim real quick, maybe, maybe the solution, and maybe I'm not thinking this completely through in my mind, but when you say it has to be specific, if there is a, if, when the budget is established for 2021, if a motion was made that, and I'm just using this as an example, but I think this is how you would do it. You would say, if the budget increases by 10% or more, then a consideration would be made to give city employees whatever is established as the raise, if it's a 1%, a half percent, or 2%. And then I think at that point, then, it would be considered because it has already, that motion has already been made, if that threshold is met. And then the, the current city council then could vote on that because that threshold has been established. Is that what you're talking about, being specific?
That would be one specific number. That would be one specific number that could be used.
Okay.
Another one that potentially could be used is set it at a specific amount of collections at a certain date.
Talking to your mic, please.
If you're gaining by April 1, a quarter of the revenue for the year, or whatever it would normally, whatever number you set it at, but it has, it needs to be a specific number.
Right.
And that's, and yes, you could derive a specific number from what she's talking about.
Right, okay, all right.
As long as you've got something to actually measure it by, then it's hard for anyone to come in and say, you're being precious, you're being arbitrary, you're not following-
But then, then let me ask you this. If that is the, if that is the guideline, or how you've initially set that determination, does it still need to come back to city council for a vote? It would, correct? To finalize it?
You could authorize the finance director to make that determination as to the number in your vote.
Just automatically, or?
And it would be automatic.
Okay. Or you could say it needs to come before a vote to city council again at that time?
If you wanted to, yes, you could do that.
So those, that's kind of your, that would be an option.
Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, we could just tie it to sales tax receipts, and if they increase X amount to a certain date, cool, make it specific.
All right, we got a-
One more comment?
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah. Well, I'm glad to get anything for the city employees, but to me, it really doesn't make any sense, because if you give them their raise in June, and the governor closes the state in August, you're in the same boat as we are tonight, giving them a raise January 1. But I'm glad that they're going to get maybe a raise sometime in 2021.
Ms. Snyder?
No, it's me.
I mean, Ms. Green, I'm sorry.
I agree with what Bob is saying, and I understand it, but the worst thing for me would be having to lay off employees because we couldn't afford them. So I guess I'm just trying to be prudent, and it hurts that I can't give them a raise. I mean, it really does hurt. But I think they would understand that we really do, and that if we do, COVID doesn't attack us, then, yeah, we're going to be in a part where we can give them the raise and give them a retroactive back to the first of the year. So I think that's the best we can do, and I appreciate, Bob, that you brought up and thought about our employees.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion on that? Okay. All right, so that's no further discussion. We'll come up to agenda setting. Anyone? All right, comments? City council comments? Mr. Thomas?
Well, I just would like to say that I appreciate the people who wanted to make a mid-year or whatever salary increase possible, but they didn't follow through with the motion, so we have nothing to go on from this point. But regardless of that, I just wish that it had gone better. Thank you.
Ms. Green?
Well, first, I'd like to thank all the people that supported me. I'd like to thank my opponent, Mike Seals, he ran a very honorable campaign. I'm delighted with the HDC that we will not be worried about that for a while. And I had a text from a constituent today commenting on how wonderful the Christmas decorations were, and asked if I would thank the employees that did it. So people are noticing and thank the employees.
Ms. Snyder?
Okay, this Wednesday, which is November 11th, in view of the virus situation, we will not be having our annual Veterans Day Parade luncheon in the whole nine yards. Excuse me. So what we are going to do is going to be very limited, but there's no way we are not going to honor our military. So this Wednesday, at the top of Plainer Hill, where we have our various military flags, we will be doing our annual honorary shoot, for lack of a better term. It's our gun salute to our military, and it will be at 11 o'clock and 11 minutes after. So on 11/11, at 11/11, is how we military put it, we will be doing our annual gun salute in honor of all of our military past, present, and future. Anybody who wants to come, please do. Thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
I'd like to thank some of the volunteers that I saw putting Christmas lights up in the spring parks today. That's a, that's a very good thing to see, people helping out in town.
Ms. Harmon?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of back up what Melissa said. I did want to congratulate Laura Jo, I think you say her name, Smoley, on winning the seat for city council, and I wish her the best for 2021.
All right. Well, along the same lines, I want to thank Ms. Harmon and Mr. Thomas for your service to the city council.
We're not gone yet, Butch. But thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah. You didn't include you.
I didn't mean that you were gone yet, Mr. Thomas. If you want to interrupt me, I was going to thank you for your service while we were talking about. I know that you lost the election, and I appreciate everybody running, and I think that's an important part. I know I talked to y'all privately on the phone to thank you for your service on there, but I want to say it publicly at this point also. And also, I'm excited that we did win by the HDC. I think that's very, says a lot for our community. And above all, I think what Ms. Snyder was talking about, I want to thank all the servicemen for their service on this Wednesday. We are going to have the 21-gun salute at the top of the hill because of the COVID virus. It's going to be limited, and we won't have our parade, but we will still be honoring our veterans, and I think that's so important for Eureka Springs to recognize. And I want to thank you all very much for your service into the, so if there's nothing else, I'd take a motion. Yes, ma'am?
Are we meeting the Monday before Thanksgiving, or the Monday after?
I think it's the Monday before.
The same week as?
The same week.
Monday.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you all.